The meeting to order for July 7th, 2014. Gee, we was just waiting until you got in before we called it to order. All right. Sam, please.
Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your blessings, the exaltation of the Holy Spirit will govern this meeting. Help us to make good and wise decisions. Father God, we lift up the mayor of our city, the members of this council, and our families, all of the employees that work for the city of Shreveport, and especially our citizens. Father God, we pray for their safety, we pray for their success in every way. It's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Jeff?
You lead during the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sherika, is Shelley coming down for the meeting?
Either she or a representative should be here.
You said a representative was here.
Yeah, well, they should be coming. I don't see anyone right now.
Where's the representative?
Yeah, I don't see they're here right now.
Yeah, Shelley or a representative should be.
Oh, okay.
They should be coming.
I'm sorry, I thought you said a representative was here. B, can you call up there and see whether Shelley's coming down?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, the ma- I'm sorry. This is B in the council chamber. Mr. Shine was asking for Shelley. Is she coming down? Yes, ma'am. Thank you. She said she's on her way.
Okay, thank you, B. All right, now, B, you wanna call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Everson?
Here.
Mr. Oliver Jenkins? Mr. Corbin? Mr. Webb? Mr. Shine?
Present.
Mr. Sam Jenkins?
Present.
Okay, uh, tomorrow at this time, we'll have a motion for the approval of the minutes. Mr. Sherika, do you have any distinguished guests from the administration?
Um, none, none at this moment, and the mayor is on his way, so he may have some.
All right, well, if it's all right with you, we'll just skip that and wait until he comes. Would that be fine with you?
Sounds good.
All right, I wanna make sure that I'm doing what you want done. I tell you what, uh, excuse me, before, okay. Ms. Farnell, just before you come up, let me, uh, do this. We have, uh, Mr. John Hubbard, who's here with us, and he's a very, very important man, and you know, his time is, is, is very important. Mr. Hubbard, we're gonna ask you to come up and give us what you need to give us, and we're going from now.
Thank you. John Hubbard? Office 428 Travis at SWEPCO, and my home is 430 Town South, if you need all that today. But I am simply here to say thank you for the support you provided to the airshow. That's a, a big deal for this community, the scope and magnitude of the airshow, how it's recognized nationwide, and I've had the pleasure or challenge of going for the last few years to the International Council airshows, and, and I do understand it's a business, but it's very impressive how many people really want to be at this show because of the, it's, it's a premier event across this nation, and, and a lot of people wanna be involved in it, and certainly we can't afford that. But, uh, booking acts and getting the right blend of acts and paying for fuel and smoke oil and all the things that come with getting, uh, high-quality acts into this community and for that show is a, uh, is a pretty good undertaking, but your support means a bunch, and so I just want, we don't always say thank you, and we should, so I'm here to do that.
All right, before you go, Rose, you have anything you'd like to say to John?
No, I just appreciate you bringing it to us every year.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Well, it was great to see it return to form this year after, after a little time away.
Yeah, it shut down. If y'all can deal with sequestration in the future, we applaud you and we'll put you at the edge of the line.
Well, it returned with, with, with fire, you know? It was, uh, it was definitely, uh, well-attended and a great event, and I certainly appreciate Jill's efforts in making that happen and facilitating a successful return.
Thank you.
Sam?
Thanks for taking the time to come down and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Art, since you're a retired veteran.
John doesn't wanna hear what I have to say.
Oh, okay.
Don't give him a shot at me, no.
Oh, Art's a mess. Sherika, did you have anything you'd like to say?
Oh, great show. Y'all do an awesome job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, we appreciate the job that y'all do every year.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate you.
All right.
Go.
That's it. Shelley, before I forget about it, uh, you can just stay right there. For some reason, the school board took the goals down at Oak Park. And if you remember, that was a basketball court that the community used, you know, 'cause it was right next to the, to the park. Uh, well, if you check in on that, and even if you have to talk to the superintendent, let's see if in some kind of way, 'cause I've, I've had just kids and parents stop by my house, knocking on my door, telling me that they need the goals back up, because that's where they play basketball. And let's see if it isn't something that we can work out with them, because you know, school is not there anymore. They moved the school. So let's see if we can get those goals back up for those kids, 'cause they have to walk too far, and, and you know that, uh, the other park, we only have two goals, and, and when you get hundreds of kids ganged up and waiting to play, anything can happen, so please do that. Ms. Farnell? Okay. I assume it's Shelley?
Oak Park has, um, I believe, you're talking about Oak Park right there next to Hollywood Heights?
Yes.
They have donated that property to the Housing Authority, so that's no longer even school board property, so we'll have to, um, that's who we'd have to work with on seeing if they would put the goals back up.
Right, well, we shouldn't have a, we shouldn't have a problem working with them. Now, if, if, if they say okay, and, and I don't know whether they have the facilities to put the goals back up, can we get them? Do you have somebody?
Um, let me talk to them and see what, whether they wanna back up or, or not, I mean, what they're doing with the property, and let's, let's start there, and then we'll see what we can do.
Okay, let's, let's see if we can work out something, because then that would keep us from looking at trying to put a basketball, you know, throw a slap and putting a couple of goals there, because, uh, the park has used those facilities for the last, uh, probably as long as Sherika is old, about 25 years. So, and it would save us some money.
Okay, let me see what we can find out.
Okay. You see Sam and Art kinda laughing when I said 25, Sherika, they think you're older than that.
I think you're being quite generous, but that's...
A little bit.
Okay, no, I don't...
It's not too far off.
Not too far off, maybe a year, maybe a year, six months, you know? That's, that's not, that's not bad. Dorothy, please. Dorothy says she don't wanna talk about no ages for women. Come on, Donna.
She looks beautiful at any age, so what, what, what do we have today? Anything new?
Anybody got any questions for, for?
I got an answer.
Twenty, twenty-three, seven, a minute.
I have an answer for Ms., um, Councilwoman McCullough. That, we did cite the, um, Mr. Graham, um, he...
Franklin or Graham?
Benjamin.
Ben, I know Ben's the first name, okay.
Okay. Uh, there's a warrant out for his arrest at this time. It was cited. We have given that to the police, and so that's where we are on that, okay?
Warrant for the arrest, so from there?
Because he did not show up at court.
Oh, okay, good, okay.
Yes, ma'am. We issued a citation for court. He did not come to court, and a warrant was issued for his arrest. Yes, ma'am. So that's where we are on that. They are aware of it, and they are seeking to...
And some other issues that he might be having? And they're aware of that?
Yes. Oh, the one that we talked about?
Yeah.
Uh, did not, but the police, I did tell them.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you so kindly.
Just gonna ask about, um, I see that y'all cited it, and I appreciate it, but just wanted to see, and you don't have to tell me right now, but if I can get an update in the next day or so on East Prospect at Holly, um, that's the one where there was some large tree limbs that had fallen in the yard, and, um, like I say, I noticed it was cited, but I wasn't sure if y'all heard anything back from me.
I'll get you an update on that. I'll send it to you. Yes, sir.
Dorothy, I'm sorry, let me give this to you. This is a letter about some property that needs to be cleaned off, so this wrote to me. Sam?
Oh, I have it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. B, you have anything?
No. Okay.
And we did take care of the, um, the conference, the, the property, adjudicated property that was for...
Thank you for that.
The conference is gonna be this week, though.
That's, that's true. I was thinking...
Yes, sir. I went by and checked on it.
I was saying it was last week.
No, it's gonna be this week, and, um, it will, it was taken care of that time, but then we're gonna go back and reinstate to make sure everything is okay.
Please, and, and the other thing, uh, the, the street right next to where the trim shop is, you know, kinda on the corner there, you know, it's a trim shop, uh, it's some old limbs and stuff there, 'cause I know Mr. Harris would probably have sent his group. It's some old, uh, some old limbs. It's kinda right across from where, uh, the new police station is.
Yes, sir. I know who you're talking about.
Yeah. Yeah, let's see if they can pick up those old limbs, 'cause people gonna be coming in from everywhere, and we wanna make sure that we put our right foot forward for the city.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Might have someone that wanna move Shreveport, 'cause you know we're losing population. That would help us out.
Have you noticed?
Absolutely. Excuse me. Oliver, you got anything you wanna?
No, I got my update that I got, so I'm good.
Oh, all right. Sam, you see that Oliver gets here early? You had to wait until you get the council meeting in order to get yours.
No, I sent an email.
Oh, okay.
You know, victims innocent.
Oh, okay. I just, uh, Ms. Farnell, I didn't want, uh, Oliver be getting something special that Sam couldn't. Looking out for you, Sam. All right. Okay, uh... Ms. Scott, did you have something today?
That's ridiculous.
Okay, thank you. All right, and Ms. Sanders, we'll get you at the next meeting, unless you have something special. Okay.
Do y'all have a report for tomorrow? Did I get something from Callaway?
Yes, sir, I believe that, um, the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, Mr. Callaway, has an update on the 2014 priorities that the HPC adopted at the beginning of the year. I believe it's a brief update.
Uh, I think I was supposed to send it to all council members, and I don't think I did. I think I got it over the weekend, but I'll send it out. And he wants to speak tomorrow, I believe.
Who is that now?
Callaway.
The Chair of the Historic Preservation.
Sure.
Gonna give us an update.
As a matter of fact, we're gonna let Jeff introduce it. I called him up, Ron. Okay. Uh, no public here. Right, Mr. Thompson?
That's correct.
Okay. Any legislation to the agenda?
We're probably gonna have at least one tomorrow. Mrs. McCullough is working on a resolution, uh, that's not quite ready yet, but it should be ready tomorrow.
Okay.
Do we need, do we have any subject matter that we, or is it a big surprise?
It's, uh...
No, it's not a big surprise.
Wow.
No, it's a congratulations.
It's a pleasant surprise.
Excellent. I love this pleasant surprise. It's the less pleasant ones that I'm...
That you don't like, yeah. Okay. Okay. Uh... Sherika, we have any appointments that we would like to look at for tomorrow?
No, none, none that I'm aware of.
We're now at, at our legislative agenda. Mr. Thompson, do you have any?
Sure. Um, let's start with, um, Section 9A, Resolutions on Second Reading and Final Passage, which will require only one reading. Resolution 111, declaring the city's interest in certain adjudicated property as surplus. Resolution 112, declaring certain adjudicated property to be surplus, which will authorize mayor to sell the city's, of Shreveport's tax interest in those adjudicated properties and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Anybody got any comments on that? If not, uh, proceed.
Resolution 113, suspending certain provisions of Chapter 10 on July 17th, 2014, relative to dispensing, sale, and/or consumption of alcoholic beverages in the 400 block of Lake Street, Lake Streets, excuse me, for the grand opening block party for five businesses on a Lake Street and otherwise to provide with respect thereto.
Jeff?
That is pretty much just what it sounds like. There's five businesses located all in the same block, and so instead of having, uh, separate openings, they decided to kinda come together and do one big opening, and I'd like to almost make it a block party feel, so...
That's great. Okay, proceed.
Resolution 114, amending Resolution Number 91 of 2012 to authorize the expenditure of citywide street improvement program funds to include the design work for the 1,600 block of Oakdale that extends through the cul-de-sac and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Okay, uh...
This is one that, um, just to remind everyone, uh, the neighboring block of Oakdale is in the design process right now, and it is such that we're not gonna have to add anything to the budget to add, um, at the end of this block is a cul-de-sac, um, and so all the other blocks leading up to it have had, um, have been made into concrete, uh, street and curb and gutter, so this project that's currently going on would make this block, um, concrete curb and gutter, and, um, and so what this would do, since we came in a little under budget, is just extend it out into the cul-de-sac, completing the whole street, so...
On the, uh, agenda, as it was originally published, I believe it showed the 1,800 block of Oakdale. It should be the 1,600. We have made the correction, so unless Ms. Glass thinks that we need to do an amendment, we will just, you can think about that.
I think the 1,800 has already had this work done, so, um, it would be, yeah, it's certainly the 1,600.
Wait, and just so that I understand, so it's 2011 bond money, right?
Mm-hmm.
And it is whatever under your, they alloc, I mean, I don't wanna get into discussion of the allocation, but this $16,000, at least, design work is under your 3 million cap or whatever.
Oh, yeah, definitely. So the, the project, um, the Oakdale Street project itself was budgeted at about $650,000. It's estimated that it will actually probably come out to be more in the range of 350 or 375.
Oh, and so this is in that delta?
So this is adding that to it, and because of the project cost coming in a little lower, we're able to complete the whole street.
And it's that specific? That's what I was asking, it's that specific project, not the...
Correct, yeah, it's just adding that cul-de-sac into the block that's being done right now. So there should be no change to the actual, uh, no additional money is needed for this. It's already in that project budget. What we're doing is we're just extending the parameters of the...
These are funds that are already available.
Already, okay.
Okay, um... Any more questions? If not, uh, Sherika?
Okay, under Section B, introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to July 22nd, 2014. Resolution 115, authorizing the acceptance of a donation from Wells Fargo Premier Asset Services. Resolution 116, authorizing the execution of a certification agreement with the State of Louisiana Department of Culture, Recreation, and Tourism and otherwise to provide with respect thereto.
And we will have a, as it was mentioned, we'll have a presentation on this tomorrow, but just to give everybody a little, a brief background, um, the certified local government status is, um, one of the, was one of the goals for the, um, for the Historic Preservation Commission, um, to be awarded this goal, and it's a, um, it's a designation that you get at the state level and the federal level. The state has approved our application. Now it will be going on to the federal for review, and this is a resolution supporting that. So it's, uh, it's great work, and I'm happy to see them moving along this quickly with it. It's a pretty detailed application, so they're doing well.
Ms. Fields, move on.
Okay.
Introduction of ordinances?
Uh, Section C, introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to July 22nd, 2014. Resolution 70, declaring the city's interest in certain vacant lots as surplus, and our intention to donate certain vacant lots acquired by community development for Phase 3 of Concordia Place Development to Fuller Center for Housing for Northwest Louisiana, Inc. Ordinance 71, amending ordinance Number 150 of 2013, which amended and reenacted Sections 10-172 of the Code for Ordinances.
Okay, any questions? If not, Ms. Fields, we've enjoyed it so far, so move on.
Introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to August 12th, 2014. Ordinance 72, declaring the city's interest in certain vacant lot, excuse me, certain vacant property as surplus, and our intention to donate certain vacant property acquired by community development by a foreclosure to Hope for the Homeless, Inc.
Any questions?
All right, stand by one. I was looking for the physical address.
Is there a map on there?
My question is, how close is it to the, you wanna say, to the existing campus, if that is called a campus?
Where you, Bonnie?
Jeff, is it in here?
It is, um, let's see, I think the physical address here is 3858 Mayfield.
She's coming up with it, so we can stop guessing at it.
I think the address was correct. It's located in the Mooretown neighborhood. It's not close to the site.
And so what is the, uh, summary, what's their intention to use this?
Well, it was the city's intention to donate it to a homeless vet, but as you know, if the city was to donate it, it would have to go up before the public, so it was a better vehicle to send it through Hope for the Homeless, which is, that's their mission.
So Hope for the Homeless is gonna get title to this property?
Mm-hmm.
And then transfer it?
And then transfer it to...
To a homeless family or a homeless vet.
I got you.
Well, now, will they bill on this, uh, will the fam that have to bill on that?
We've already rehabilitated it.
Oh, yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Great.
I got you. Okay.
What, where is it, where is it in, in Mooretown?
It's over by Airport Park, um, close to, I'm not real familiar with that area, but it's over in that vicinity by Airport Park.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Next to Broadway.
Next to Broadway, okay. Thank you. All right, uh... Sherika?
Under Section D, ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance 53, amending the 2014 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 64, authorizing the mayor to execute all necessary legal instruments to effect the exchange of certain immovable property owned by the city of Shreveport for certain immovable property owned by Louisiana CVS Pharmacy LLC, repealing ordinance Number 35 of 2014 and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Ordinance 66, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the agreement and lease with NBI Global LLC. Ordinance 67, amending the 2014 general fund budget, appropriating the funds authorized herein and otherwise provide with respect thereto. Ordinance 68, amending and repealing ordinance Number 106 of 2012, a yield intersection to a stop intersection and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Ordinance 69, amending the 2014 capital improvements budget and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
All right, um...
I got a few questions.
Okay.
Well, certainly 53, 64, and 66, are those, if they would be up for vote?
53, there's an amendment on it, um, that I'd like for everyone to review. What we did is we met with some of the department heads to go over some of the projects and make sure that we weren't putting any projects in, um, you know, jeopardy of not being able to move forward at the pace they'd like to, and so we adjusted 53 to reflect that. If anybody has any questions on it, I'm, I'm happy to answer it in more detail, but that's what that amendment reflects, is that meeting that happened as a result of last night.
And the CVS-NBI one? Do you know if we're good to go on?
Mr. Chairman, the CVS one, I'm trying to bring it up, I'm pretty sure it's ready. It was one of those advertised three times in 15 days. I can't bring it up, but I think it, we'll check on that. Okay.
And the NBI one as well?
Well, okay, the intent for, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, council members, the intent with regard to the NBI one would be for that one to be placed on the table.
Okay. Okay.
So that in the event that there is an agreement and a consensus with regard to a new lease, uh, the council would be able to act upon it, say at the next meeting or the meeting thereafter, without having to start the advertising clock to ticking again right from the beginning. That gets our six weeks of statutory required advertising all the way, um, with it being there available in the event that we come to a consensus.
And, Mr., I've finally got the ordinance to open. The CVS one is ready to adopt.
And then just as a, uh, point of order, I guess, 68, it's got, it's got my name next to it, but that's not something I'm, that I had introduced or, nor is it in my district. I believe it's in Councilwoman McCullough's...
I think you made that correction before.
Yeah, it just, it didn't show up on the agenda, it didn't get changed on the agenda, but that one is, I mean, just in case anybody's wanting to...
I mean, the next time there's an article in the paper, I want you to get full credit for it, Jeff, because I noticed you were leading the tally of, uh...
I don't know how they pick that. I wish, uh...
Tally of what?
Wish they would reconsider it. It mentions.
Of introductions. Okay, now, and then my next question is...
The introductions, yeah.
Yeah, remember whatever they said, who's introduced more legislation than anybody else? Jeff was winning that.
It may have something to do with Chapter 10 exemptions.
Um, the street sweepers piece of legislation.
I think Mike is, should be nearby, Stan is out.
Oh, Mike was in here, okay. I'm assuming we're not ready to vote on that tomorrow, but if we are ready to vote on it, I think we have some things to talk about, because we had some, we had a proposal from Shreveport Green that, uh, had another way of approaching this issue that I thought should be discussed, and if we're gonna use tomorrow's council meeting to discuss it, that's fine, but probably Stan or somebody that really has been involved with this since the beginning. And I'm assuming Mike just hasn't been involved in this particular issue, so it would be probably not the...
Stan has been, uh, the one who has been tasked with, with bringing all of this together, so we wanna have the most complete discussion. It would be best to have Stan as a part of that.
So, I mean, I'll be happy to postpone this unless we hear something back from y'all in regard to this discussion. Jeff, unless you've gotten an update on any of this?
I did get an email from, it, it looks like you may have been attached on it, um, from Stan this morning, um, with a response to some questions that I had asked him about it, but, I mean, I'm also perfectly comfortable with waiting until he's back, um, but I did receive a response from him.
Okay, I haven't checked my emails.
Stan will be here tomorrow?
I'm not sure if he'll be here tomorrow. If not, then, um, we'll see if Mike Wood has any background.
Okay.
Otherwise, we may, you know, need to hold off until we have him available.
Right, if not... Right, if not, Mr. Mayor, we're not in a great big hurry, are we?
Well, not, not necessarily, Mr. Chairman, except to the extent, I mean, certainly a meeting won't harm us. This has just been an area, you know, where we have talked a lot about, and we're trying to take some action. And we do definitely think that it's proper to have a full airing and briefing. And we want to just do whatever we do as smartly as we can. And so if there's some ideas out there that we need to incorporate, then we certainly, certainly open that and have no problem with postponing on tomorrow. And definitely we'll work with the council to make sure that we, we get the council as well as the public, you know, and up to speed in terms of what this is, what it represents, and ensure that we're going forward. Just know that, that just like you guys, tired of the street looking the way they are.
Yeah, and I don't want to say delay. I just want to make sure that we have the conversation at the right level. And I don't think it's fair to put somebody that hadn't been really involved in the program to get.
This, this has been one of the things that Stan has been specifically tasked with, is to, is to get us into a, the cleaner street business, which by all accounts puts us back into the street sweeping business, so. But we're trying to figure out how to get that done and welcome any ideas in terms of how we do that, one, effectively, and certainly cost effectively.
Okay, Mr. Thompson, table legislation.
I'm not aware of any item to be removed from the table, Mr. Shine.
Any council members have an item that they would like to have removed from the table? If not, the table is full. Okay, Ms. Fornell. Ms. Fornell, it's all in your hand?
Yes, sir, thank you, Councilwoman Shine. Our first property is 360 East 6th and 8th Street. Owner is present. He is demolishing his structure. He's doing a wonderful job. Everything has, he's stacking everything up as he proceed with demolition. And we would ask that you would continue this to October the 14th, please. He is present, come on up.
Let him come up and.
Yes, sir. This is in Councilman Oliver Jenkins' area. Yes, sir.
These gentlemen have put up the fence, too.
Yes, sir, he put up a fence for security, coming up to Mike.
And, but, did you, recommendation for time, excuse me, Dorothy, Ms. Fields?
Yes, I said October the 14th.
Yeah. I mean, I, listen, I think he's doing a good job.
Yes, sir.
I think it's great if somebody takes matters into their own hands. So I'd certainly make a motion to give him that extension until October 14th, he said.
Sam, that'd be a second from you, okay? It's been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, second by Councilman Sam Jenkins.
I mean, October the 13th. That's what it would be, October the 13th, I'm sorry.
That we would give him.
October the 13th. Yes, sir.
That we would give him until October 13th. All in favor vote yes, opposed is no. Passes with a 5-0, 6-0 vote. One not here that request was granted. Did you want to, did you want to say anything?
No.
Okay. We don't want to cut nobody short.
All right.
All right, thank you, Oliver. All right.
The next property is at 1447 Hollywood Avenue, Councilwoman Shine, this is in your area, Ms. Mary Deacon.
Is she here?
Doesn't look like she is present.
What's your recommendation?
My, my recommendation for this is to continue with the rehab, but I'm also asking 10 days for her to abate the care premise, cut the grass, and cut the fence row, because that has not been done. So I would ask that that case be continued also to October the 13th as far as the rehab.
So move.
Second.
Okay.
So we're voting on two things, both the rehab till October the 13th and the care premise abatement?
Care premise and the grass to be done in 10 days.
It's been moved by the chair, second by the vice chair. All in favor vote yes. Will you contact, will you make the contact with the property owner?
We sent letters.
Oh, we do, okay.
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Also, if this isn't done in 10 days, the care premise and the grass, I would ask that you order the property standards to abate it.
Would you put that in there too, Mr. Thompson, please?
And that it be charged to the owner if the grass is not cut and the care premise isn't done?
Okay, please, I think Mr. Thompson will include that. Especially when you talk nice to him, when you say please, and yes, sir. All those good things. You heard that you can get more done with honey than you can with vinegar?
Yes, sir.
I live by that.
Yes, sir.
By those premises, and please, Mr. Thompson. Okay, next.
The next one we have is also in your area, Mr. Shine. It is 600 West 73rd Street, Mr. James Mike Reynolds. He is present, he is rehabbing.
You say he is present?
He is present, yes, sir.
Please come forward. Yeah, please come forward.
He's doing an excellent job on the remodeling, and we would ask for that to be continued to the October the 13th, please.
So move.
Second.
Second, moved by the chair, second by Councilman Jenkins. You want to say anything before we vote?
No, sir. It's moving along, it's just, we own, you know, just inching along. It's just, you know, money's the biggest issue right now. We, we just opened up a restaurant, and we've been open one month now, but have problems cooling the restaurant, air conditioner's not keeping up, and we're having to get a new system, and just trying to get out our debt, you know, with the, you know, bills with the restaurant. But, you know, it's, it's coming along, so. And I plan on fully, you know, remodeling that and the other two properties that I purchased. They were adjudicated properties.
Okay, Mr. Thompson, did you get?
Yes, sir, we're ready.
All right, all in favor vote yes. Request on a 6-0 vote, passed. Next.
Our next case is located, it's a vacant lot, west of 615 West 70th Street. And Councilwoman Shine, this is in your area also.
Is the property?
This is, yes, sir. This is a vacant lot, it's a care premise.
All right. All right.
And what we are asking is for this to be, well, let me say this. Some of the things that we thought would have been done has not been done.
Am I correct?
Yeah, it has not been done. Looking at the picture, it has not been done. So we would ask that this would be done, especially on the cleanup, the removal of some of the cleanup and things that were here before. We would ask that those would be done in the next 10 days, or city forces would come and do them themselves. That's our recommendation.
Do you, do you understand what you were saying?
Not really.
Okay, would, would, do it again, Ms.
Arthur, could you list what, what is to be done in 10 days? Looks like.
This, that's been there. That's, that's was there when the last time. None of this has been moved. So since it hasn't been moved, and this was the last time that we were here, we had asked for it to be done.
What else needs to be done outside of this that we need to be moved back there?
We want, we want, we want this part cleaned up. You have done some work, and we recognize that this, this bush right here needs to be cut right there, and all of this needs to be cleaned up, and those other two, this right here. That's the same one that was here before. I'm asking that you can do that in the next 10 days.
Okay, is 10 days enough?
10 days, or city forces will come out and abate it.
Okay. So move.
Second.
Been moved by the chair, second by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. All in favor vote yes, opposed is no. Passes with a 6-0 vote. Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. All right. Next, Ms. Fornell.
Yes, sir. Our next case is a demolition of 118 Egan Street. It's in Councilman Efferson's area.
See the property, tell me what your recommendation would be.
Well, nothing has been done.
Is Miss Bobby Monroe here?
Is she here? I don't think she is.
Miss Monroe, come forward. Okay.
This is in the 101st Egan. Can you give me a little bit of background on it, just?
Yes, sir.
I'm in a part of, you know, near our historic district. I get a little, I just want to hear a little bit more before I say to move forward on.
Yes, as you can see who the owners are. We had Ms. Moore, Ira Investment through James Britt, and Red Hill Associates. We did contact them, the board. They did go before the property standards board. The board gave them 30 days. The owner was not present. That was the reason why they were only given that time, because they weren't there. Nothing has been done. They did get, they did get their notice signed for it. But of course, and we have gone as far as disconnecting utilities for demolition, and they filed an appeal since that time.
And so have you all heard from them at all? Or they just, they just filed the appeal and then they hadn't done anything?
They, they contacted us when they filed the appeal.
But they haven't pulled any permits or anything to do anywhere?
No permits have been issued as of this day, no, sir.
Is there somebody living there?
I mean, it doesn't look that bad. It feels, I'm hesitant to say.
There's no one living there to answer your question, no, sir.
Is the blue car there with the neighbor or whatever, or?
I think that.
Does the inspector?
Car is probably on the other side, but no, no. There's nobody. Like I said, we've disconnected the utilities there, so.
Ready to go.
Yes, if you want to continue this, I have no objection.
I'd like to just, I'd like to just, can we ask the owner to respond and, you know, by the next meeting? I mean, I don't want to postpone this thing forever, but if it can be saved, I'd like to see.
Yes, sir.
You know, so my motion would be to move to.
30 days?
15.
15 days?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to push.
Do we have a second on that?
Okay, that's going to be.
It's been moved by the vice chair, 15 days, second by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. Let's vote.
It's until the next meeting.
Yeah.
What, July 21st?
Can I just, you have James Britt.
Under two different companies.
Under two different companies that signed this card. And then who is Bobby Lee Moore?
Another owner?
Rob, all of these are, are owners, investors, tax buyers, we've notified them all.
And the only person that's responded is, well, I guess James Britt at some point responded.
Signed, and, yes, and like I said, even though they filed their appeal to property standards, they did not come. Bunny Lee Moore filed an appeal.
Oh, really? Because that person also seems to not have unclaimed all of the certified letters.
I mean, I'm just saying, the way I read this thing, it's very confusing.
It is.
To see who the, I mean, it's almost as if you'd want to do the research over at this point, to make sure we're notifying even the right person, but I.
Well, the way the ordinance read, we have to notify anyone who has an interest. So there may be several people on here that we would have to notify. Mortgage companies, tax buyers, anyone that has an interest in it, we would be notifying them.
These certified letters where it's, where they've been unclaimed, you know, it says Bobby Lee Moore at 118 Egan Street. Was that, that was the person who was the occupant until recently?
118 Egan Street was the house itself. We always do that, and then we send it to everyone else. Ms. Moore's was 3157 Woodlawn Avenue.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't the only address it was getting sent to for that person.
No.
Because it appears it's not being, but now I see that it's.
And hers was unclaimed. So the address, we assume it was a good address, but, you know, in the three attempts that the postmaster made, she didn't claim it. But she did send a letter to appeal it.
Yeah, on 513, Ms. Moore's letter is the letter that is the appeal. So basically, these other people, that is, these investment companies have not even appealed nor.
They have so many of them.
Right.
Investment companies.
I mean, it's kind of a, it's kind of a shame.
So we're continuing to July the 21st, sir?
Yeah, just, and, and let them know, I mean, this is, this is the last chance to try to get it, some, some action on it. I mean, it just, it's a shame, because it looks like it could be a salvageable house, but.
And also, also get with the standards on this one. And I will talk on this one also.
Right, yeah, and it, odds are it is not in the historic district. I don't believe it is.
Yes.
But it could be a contributing element in it. It, I don't think it is, but it's worth double checking.
Yes, she did look at it, but I'll visit with her again, okay?
All right.
I need you to vote again, I'm sorry. Please vote again, if you don't mind.
Yeah, please vote again. All right, that's a 6-0 vote. In favor. All right, next one.
Yes, this is a care premise at 201 East Columbia. This is, Mr. Efferson, this is your case in your area also. It's under the blue tab.
This is near.
Is the property owner here?
I don't think so, no.
Okay.
This one, I believe, I've driven by recently. They had a, they had a lot of stuff stored on the property?
The, yes, the inspector for this area, Mr. Fozzie, has been working with the owner because of the way that the landscaping is shifting down, water running, and they have made adequate progress. They've cleaned up a great deal. They rearranged the concrete piles, they removed the walkway. They are building a retaining wall. So we would agree to have them to continue the process.
And how long do you think they need?
Well, since they're not here, let's say.
60 days or? You can tell they're working on it.
Yeah. What about August 25th or September 22nd? Is that, that's not 60, okay, let's go for September the 22nd.
August 25th is a good day.
Okay. He said 60, is that the 60 days?
Well, okay, so move, postpone to August 25th.
August the 25th is fine.
Do I have a second on that, Sam?
Second.
It's been moved by the vice chair for August 25th, second by Councilman Sam Jenkins. All in favor, yes, opposed, no. Motion passes with a 6-0 vote.
Those are all the cases that I have.
All right, thank you so very much, kind lady. Okay, we want to hurry up and get through because we have an executive session.
Councilwoman Shine?
Yes.
I don't think this is for Ms. Fornell, I think it's for Attorney Scott.
Ms. Scott?
I received a phone call today from a constituent that resides in Cherokee Park regarding the demolition for the funeral home. the demolition for the funeral home. And of course, I referred them to my good friends Debbie Martin and Bruce Roberts because I know this is a project that they're very sincere about, just kind of updating and giving them a little bit more insight on the issue with the demolition process. Do you know, could you kind of like give me the status of really what's going on or...
Ms. McCullough, can we talk about that after this council meeting?
Sure.
And I'll give you an update on, on the information I have so far on that.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Terry, before you go, I'm a, we hadn't talked about this, but I'm, I'm assuming that it at least needs to be an explanation for why it is that you don't want to give that answer in an open proceeding. I'm assuming because of the investigation and the other legal matters that are surrounding it?
Exactly.
Okay, well, I want that to, I want anybody to leave away with thinking that there's not some appropriate reason as to why that question would not be answered directly in an open meeting. I know that there's probably still a criminal investigation that's still going around.
There is an investigation ongoing in regard to a bankruptcy that's been filed that involves that property also.
Well, my concern is due to the landfill issue. I mean, for some reason, the citizens feel, feel like we as elected officials can override litigation at some point. There's something that we can do. So for that reason, I mean, I didn't want this to lead to a similar situation.
I understand.
You know, where it's constantly tied up in litigation, you know, because the pressure is put on the council.
And the litigation that the bankruptcy that the mayor spoke about is not a matter that involves the city of Shreveport directly. One of the parties who is the owner of that building is involved in a bankruptcy, and there's an investigation going on regarding that bankruptcy.
Okay. All righty. Thank you.
And once you guys have that conversation, Terry, I want you to be in a position to determine what is it that you can say publicly and on the record. But I don't want anybody to have an impression that this is not something that we are not wanting to be able to share within the context of an open meeting. That's what I know prior to even coming up when you mentioned it.
Right.
There are some criminal aspects of this that are being investigated that are still under review, that are connected to all kinds of aspects of this. So definitely want to be in a position to, to let the folks in Cherokee Park know that those issues are not just simply being ignored either by you as their council representative or by this administration or by any other folks who are tasked with the responsibility of trying to make sure that a situation like that ends up being addressed as quickly as possible because it is an absolute eyesore and a source of great nuisance and annoyance for the folks who live in that area. And we join them in wanting to see it demolished and cleared away as quickly as possible.
Yeah, because a lot of the responses that I'm getting, Oliver, is that if this was in Oliver's district, it would have been torn down a couple of years ago.
Wow.
I mean, that's how, that's what's being projected toward me. There's no way that something like this would be standing in Oliver Jenkins, well, not such as his name, but his district.
Wow.
And I know you, you...
And that's offensive to me.
Well, and I know you reference Councilman Oliver Jenkins' name and district only as an example of...
Right.
A more affluent, exceptionally more influential area. But I would hasten to add, I think if you had the same type of situation or the same types of circumstances, that if there were an ongoing investigation where the facility itself, the premise itself was still considered, I'm assuming as best I understand it, as being a crime scene potentially, evidence and what have you, that still needed to be preserved? Then, then you probably would still see unfortunately, Mr. Jenkins' district being similarly burdened. Although we don't want anybody to go out and give us a test case.
It's not to send that message out there, because I think we get some really mixed messages.
We don't want a test case to be able to prove.
I think the point is, I don't think it matters what district you're in as opposed to where we are today in terms of resolving it. And I think couldn't fix it any faster in anybody else's district once you get to where we are today.
But actually, that's what I've been getting from my constituency, you know. If it was out and brought more, you know, it would have been done a long time ago. So that's offensive to me. So I have to share that and bring that to my co-councilperson, you know. It's a fact. But that's how the citizens feel about it.
Wow.
Don't hesitate to educate them properly when given an opportunity.
I will, okay.
That was why, Mr. Chairman, councilmember, I felt the need to, in hearing the, the question and then the answer, for those folks out there who may be here personally in attendance, those who are watching, anybody in the media, to not leave away with the impression that this is not something that is extremely important. And that we have a great deal of, of understanding and sensitivity to and share their concern. And while we understand the inclination to want to parallel it to the Harrelson landfill, it's not an apple to an apple in this case.
Okay, Mr. Thompson? Zoning boards of appeals, we have anything to add?
We don't have any ABO appeals or MPC appeals for today. No taxi appeals or SOB.
Okay, reports from office boards and committees? If we don't, we want to get into, we have to wait until...
4:30.
4:30. Oh, well, well, Mr. Mayor, we got plenty of time there. We turn this, what is it, 25 minutes, discourse over to the administration. I know. I know.
Can we get the vote on that? Because I got to say, if I've got a say on that deal, I'm a...
You go vote no. You think he could use that 25 minutes of talking over there?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Someone has, for some odd reason, detached my microphone over here. I'm not sure if there's a, there is a signal it was trying to send to me, but my microphone is detached. And I am fresh back from the Essence Festival.
Wow, I know you got a lot to say there. I don't know whether B did that or not.
Now, that was a, that was, that was an additional set.
Okay.
That was potentially considering me at it. But, so I didn't get a chance to, 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 to join...
Okay.
The encore for Prince on Friday night, but I have a couple of songs.
Right, it was, that was pretty fabulous. You want to, you want to give us a little heads up on the Essence Festival, Mr. Thompson? You, you want to hear what went on down in New Orleans at the Essence Festival? Since you and I didn't get a chance to attend.
Not, not on the record, Mr. Shannon.
Oh, okay.
But actually, I was going to sing a few songs, I didn't want to... But I wouldn't want to complicate the...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Now, B, that would have been nice to have as a part of the record, with the man singing some of those beautiful songs that went on down there. That was kind of R&B, too, wasn't it?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Yes, sir.
R&B, neo-soul.
Okay.
Little blues.
Okay. Did we have any bluegrass?
Well...
Jeff and I might want to hear a few little bluegrass.
I think that may have been in the super lounges.
Okay.
There was some blue-eyed soul without question.
Okay. Oliver, you heard that?
I heard it, Chad. Are these remarks on the record? Is that a part of the minutes?
Well, since the mayor doesn't, he isn't going to give us an update on Essence Festival then we'll, we'll, we'll join and, and be ready for the executive session at, what is it, 4:30?
4:30.
Okay. All right. Meeting's joined.
Thank you, Chairman, councilmember.
Thank you. Chad, a check-in on that for me here, because I think they got a, they got a...